Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting. The Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting general business of the township. Today's date is March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Is also being offered in a live streaming feature that will be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely. Instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection. To one of the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way, but to preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. We have a full complement tonight, with the exception of Commissioner Graham, who's not with us, but he is tuning in remotely. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of their March seventh, two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting to discuss two personnel matters and one real estate matter. At this time, we are going to swear in our newest police officer, Daniel Lopez, so I would like to invite Chief Picco and District Justice Kate McGill to the front room.
All right. Good evening, and thank you, Commissioners. I'm delighted to see you to present, introduce our newest officer, Daniel A. Lopez. And as most of you know, being a police officer currently, actually, the last two years, not not has has been difficult. We're entrusted with the authority to protect people, enforce our laws, and treating all who that we encounter the fair and impartial way. I've grown up in Springfield Township, and I've been a member of this department for many, many years. And we are blessed. It's a rather safe community, fabulous township to live in and work. And we enjoy much support from the community. The success of this department is a reflection of the excellent work by the men and women in the police department. I thank those officers here and not working this evening, not present for making this a very successful department. And I owe their thanks to them. So let me tell you a little bit about Officer Lopez. He was actually hired by the Springfield Township Police Department on February twenty-first. Raised in Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, which is out in Berks County, graduated Fleetwood High School. He's a graduate of the Murray Wood University located in Scranton in two thousand and sixteen with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. Previously employed with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office since two thousand and nineteen. His duties were primarily with courtroom security. And prior to that, Officer Lopez was employed by the Montgomery County Youth Center, working as a youth and family advocate. The process to become a police officer, not only in Montgomery County, but Bucks County, Philadelphia, is not an easy process, not an easy task. There's nine hundred and nineteen hours or twenty-two weeks of the academy. And Daniel, again, that was at the Montgomery County nearby here in Blue Bell, the college. Things like the vehicle code, crimes code, courtroom testimony, emergency vehicle driving training, firearms training, physical fitness, defensive tactics, and much more of those twenty-two weeks. And then to become a member of our department, we participate in a consortium. So we had a total of fourteen departments take the examination. And that consists of the written examination, a physical assessment test, which is not simple because it's a three-hundred-meter run, sit-ups, push-ups, and finally, the mile-and-a-half run. After that, there's an oral interview panel consisting of our supervisory staff here at Springfield Township with a lot of situational awareness questions. And those four, those candidates who are fortunate enough to get near the top of the percentile have to go through extremely thorough background investigation by our detective division. And then finally, with our Board of Commissioners. So Daniel Lopez was at the top of the list, and we welcome him. I'd like to recognize Daniel's parents, Juan and Elena. Daniel's father was a Pennsylvania State Trooper for twenty-two years. So we thank you for your service, sir. Officer Lopez also has his two brothers with him and his wife, and I think I'm leaving one other person out there. Okay, very nice. Nice. I'm glad. Thank you. Thanks for your service, sir. And I welcome the rest of the family. So with that, Judge McGo.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here. It's part of this special day for you. I.
I, Daniel Lopez.
I, Daniel Lopez.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Springfield.
And the township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Springfield Township.
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey and enforce.
Obey and enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members.
Governing sworn members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also.
Also.
I will not, I will not knowingly accept.
I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable things.
Or other valuable things.
For performance.
For performance.
Or non.
Or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners.
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township.
Of Springfield Township. Thank you very much.
And I want to point one, I wanted to point out one last thing. You've noticed that Officer Lopez is wearing our new bodyboard cameras, which we brought out last month in our test mode. And since that time, all our officers are now wearing bodyboard cameras. These cameras are going to make our jobs a lot easier. We've heard, we've had dash cam for years with the audio. Supplement that in a positive way.
Congratulations, Officer Lopez. You're, you're first swearing in without a face mask in a long time. So thank you for everyone for being here to support him. So thank you very much. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Sure. As a reminder, come to the mic, say your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Mary Burke. I'm a resident of Springfield Township. I would like to ask that if the board can issue a declaration against the Russian war and aggression against Ukraine and support the Ukraine citizens and refugees.
We can certainly take that under advisement. I have no, no objection to that.
Okay.
I mean, it can be done, yes.
Okay, there would be some consideration. I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you. And I have a couple other issues. I wanted to ask if it was possible during the virtual workshop meetings, if the residents would be able to be engaged and ask questions, you know, or have a discussion, you know, raise your hands, you know, as we did during COVID, because I thought that was a very successful procedure. And the residents would have more residents participate because I do know residents cannot attend always because of time constraints, health issues, or a myriad of different issues. I wanted to ask if there would be any consideration for that.
I think it's worth talking about. I know when we first went back live, we did kick around that idea. We talked about it. And at the time, the transition to just the software and the logistics and the technology of having your camera system and being live. You know, at the time, we made the decision to make it available, live streaming, but not have interaction. A lot of times, our Monday workshop meetings will go to midnight and pass, and that's just with, with people live. So I'm not entirely opposed to opening that up for discussion. I know that the school district does it. It's not impossible to accommodate, but again, we don't want to get in a position where we're having eight-hour meetings.
Certainly, and I, right. And I, and I understand that. And I think the residents, too, would be respectful, depending upon the issue, you know, of everyone's time.
We definitely try to be deferential to people that are in the room, so that they're not hanging around for a long time. So if there's an issue, you come and want to talk about, we try to address that earlier in the meeting rather than later.
Yes.
But recognizing that there probably are some residents who either can't make it here because inability for some reason, I mean, I think that's one thing that I think we should discuss is maybe possibly, you know, if there are special circumstances, how to address those. So I think it is, I think it is worth discussing.
Yeah, at the very least, we might allow questions to be put in the chat. And then at the end of the public questions, in-person questions, you know, we could have the chat questions read.
Yeah, I think you probably need to set some parameters as to how you might want to do it. Because it can get unruly if we're taking questions on each individual topic remotely as well as in person. You may want to think about setting, very similar to tonight's meeting, a public comment portion at the beginning and then go into your discussion. Set them for you to talk about at your workshop meeting.
And I agree, giving deference to people that are, are taking time out to be here and, you know, sitting through the engineer's report and that kind of thing. I do know one distinction with the school district. Generally, the school district with their live comments are limited to comments. It's, it's not a discussion. We're, we're much more discussion-based. Someone comes to the mic and says something, we, we have some back and forth, whereas the school district is more of, you can go say your piece, and they say, thank you, you know, pretty much. So, but it sounds like we're open to talking about it and seeing if we can incorporate that.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And I think I, the other residents would as well. And I just wanted to ask, Brandon could have a mic during the workshop meeting because you have an awful lot of great stuff to say, but we just can't hear you on our end.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a strategic decision.
I'll stay away from that. And I wanted to, I wanted to follow up with regard to the tank car property. I wanted to just see where we are with that. In particular, what is a timeframe for the remediation of the project, if known?
Give me take the first step of that.
You can go.
Okay.
You're up to speed as much as everyone.
Yeah, so as you, as you, I think you already know, the, there was well testing that was put in place, I think, last February it was put in, and that was required for twelve months. And we're, we're waiting for the formal report on that. All indications are that we're, you know, as good as expected. You've probably heard of the various grants over the last few months.
Yes.
That Brandon has had up. Pretty much all of those, at this point, have, have dealt with searching out grant money related to the remediation and the demolition, you know, of the site. So we're still a little far off from actually planning the end use for it. But I think we talked about Monday, maybe by this fall, we'll be in a position to start thinking about planning.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, one of, one of the items tonight is to apply for a grant for a master plan so that we can conduct public meetings and have a, an engineer or a planner help us out with the, the end use and how that might look with public comment. And we're hopeful we could get a response on that sometime in the fall on the grant and then start to work on that. In the meantime, we are going to be pursuing the abatement of the environmental hazards that are in the buildings themselves. There's nothing in the ground and where we've had that all taken care of. But we, we still have things that you might expect in an old building like that, asbestos floor tiles, fluorescent light tubes, just some containers of oil and stuff that you have to get rid of. And that has to get done before we can demolish the buildings, but we're going to be working on that hopefully through the summer so that we can get to a point where at least the buildings are gone. And you know that a portion of one of the buildings was taken down earlier this year.
Right, the office.
Because it was a hazard.
Right. And will the abatement process take place all at one time, or do you anticipate it would be done in stages?
I would envision the abatement portion happening in one phase, the demolition of the buildings happening in a second phase. But all, both phases would happen at the same time, or, you know, with all the buildings at the same time. We wouldn't call in somebody to abate the big building and then call them back later on to do the pink building in the back.
Right. Okay. And I would ask that the residents be known in advance so that we can take, you know, what we need to on our end, you know, the adjacent residents. If that would be greatly appreciated. And I, I know that we're going for, applying for various grants. And do we have knowledge if those grants would cover the cost for the abatement, the remediation, and the athletic fields?
That's the goal.
To cover it all one hundred percent?
Yeah, in several different grants. That would be our goal. There, there's still liable to be some form of a local match requirement, but we're hoping to greatly reduce whatever that cost would be.
Okay.
Through the grants.
Good. Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Margaret Mary.
That's also part of the reason why it's taking time, right?
Certainly, certainly. Yeah, yeah.
Any other public comment? All right, I'll close the public portion of the meet, public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move on to the committee reports. So I will step in and handle Commissioner Graham's report as Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee. Or in the right spot, right? Okay. My first item is regarding the Library Advisory Committee. I moved that the Board of Commissioners appoint, excuse me, Sarah LeJudas of Erdenheim to fill an unexpired term of service as member of the Free Library of Springfield Township Advisory Committee. Mrs. LeJudas's term of service shall expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. That is my motion.
I will second it.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Second item, on behalf of Commissioner Graham, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution fifteen sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the officers of the Board of Commissioners to designate authorized agents to act on its behalf with respect to an E-Trade investment account previously maintained by the Library Board of Directors of the Free Library of Springfield Township. The Library Board was dissolved in twenty, excuse me, two thousand and seven, when the Free Library of Springfield Township was established as a township operating department, at which time the township assumed all assets and liabilities of the library. The current asset, excuse me, the current agents for the account are no longer affiliated with the township. It is necessary to designate new agents to manage the account. That is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, we will move on to the Chairman of the Committee Development Committee, Commissioner Barrett Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two two motions tonight. First concerns Resolution number one five six three, which is the land development Flower Town Shopping Center. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number one five six three, a resolution granting preliminary final land development approval to Federal Realty Investment Trust, owners of the Flower Town Shopping Center at eighteen ninety Bethland Pike Flower Town for the construction of a new two thousand four hundred and fifty square foot pad site in both Springfield and White Marsh Townships. Development includes the construction of new pedestrian sidewalk connections from Bethland Pike at two locations, as well as a new landscape island landscaping and pedestrian bumpouts within the main access driveway. At the request of Springfield Township Federal Realty, has also agreed to install additional landscape screening materials in the vicinity of the giant supermarket in order to provide visual and noise mitigation measures. That is my motion.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I do appreciate greatly kind of coming out of the workshop meeting we had on Monday. Federal Realities, working together with the township on behalf of the residents to address some of the concerns of some of the neighbors that live around the shopping center, and appreciate the compromise and appreciate working with the township.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, next concerns the eight eleven, eight thirteen Pleasant Valley, excuse me, Pleasant Avenue subdivision. I move the Board of Commissioners to accept a letter dated March one, two thousand and twenty-two from Baby Pizzani, owner of eight eleven and eight thirteen Pleasant Avenue, Winmore extending the ninety-day subdivision land development plan review period until April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The extension of time will provide Miss Pizzani the opportunity to revise the subdivision lot line application involving the properties located at eleven, eight eleven, excuse me, and eight thirteen Pleasant Avenue to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. So that is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We'll move on to the Chairman of the Cultural Environmental Resources Committee, Pete Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Reporting tonight for the recycling. And pleased to announce that during the month of February, two thousand and twenty-two, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred and forty-nine point four tons of materials with a householder participation rate of seventy-two point two percent. The net costs for the month was twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We'll move on to Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Mike Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items this evening. First one is the bid for Mermaid Pond dredging project. When February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two bids were received for the Mermaid Pond dredging project for the removal of approximately three thousand five hundred cubic yards of sediment from the Mermaid Pond in Winmore. Qualified bids were received from two contractors and ranged in price from seventy-eight thousand to one hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. The low bid was received from Tooth Brothers Clearing and Dredging Incorporated of Sellersville, Pennsylvania, and was in line with the township engineers' estimated cost to perform the work. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Tooth Brothers Clearing and Dredging Incorporated for the Mermaid Pond dredging project in accordance with their low bid price of seventy-eight thousand dollars. The project is being funded via a grant obtained from Montgomery County to improve water quality and aquatic habitat at Mermaid Park. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is the Cross Country Wesahican Trail. Montgomery County is moving forward with the construction of a portion of the Cross County Wesahican Trail project on a portion of the Erdenheim Farm property within Springfield Township. The local trail will be part of a regional trail network that will connect the Scoopel River and Country Hocken to Bucks County. The local trail will connect Forbidden Drive with Fort Washington State Park. The new trail will be constructed of pervious pavement in order to satisfy the Township Stormwater Management Regulations and will require proper maintenance to perform as designed. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to enter into a stormwater management facilities, operations, and maintenance agreement with Montgomery County for the Cross County Wesahican Trail connection through Erdnine Farm. The agreement will require Montgomery County to be responsible for the maintenance of the trail and provides the township with the right to enter, inspect, if necessary, perform maintenance to the trail with all costs to be borne by the county. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick comment or quick question for our township manager. Do we have a date, estimated time?
We do not have a date on that. I put a call in today to the county to try and find out about that.
Seems like we've been close for so long.
It, it absolutely does. They, they have their NPDES permit now, which I know they were waiting on, and that was one of their last hurdles. So I think we're very close.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We'll move on to Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, John Cupp.
Hey, Commissioner. Regarding the bill listings for the month, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the February check reconciliation, the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents, and the March bill listing in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Regarding this coming month's zoning hearing board agenda, the Springfield Township zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, March twenty-eighth, at seven PM in this building, Springfield Township Building, to receive testimony on the following applications. The first application is from Glenna and Matthew Stone, owners of the, of the property located at seven seven zero four Pine Road in Winmore. The applicants are seeking to demolish the existing accessory building, stone patio and walking paths, and replace those with a new accessory building and covered patio totaling thirteen hundred and seventy-seven square feet. They're seeking dimensional relief required to allow the new accessory building to have a median building height of fifteen feet and six inches. That property is zoned within the residential district of Ward Five of Springfield Township. And the second application we'll hear is for the property at one, one one zero Willow Grove Avenue. We all see there equitable owner of the property is addressed as eleven oh eight and eleven ten Willow Grove Avenue in Winmore. The applicant has requested a use variance to allow for a multifamily dwelling, dwellings to be built on the site. In addition, a dimensional variance. In addition, a dimensional variance is also requested to allow for a dwelling unit to be constructed on a lot of 4,380 square feet instead of the required 8,000 square feet. Dimensional variance has also been requested to allow for the front yard setback to be reduced to 20 feet instead of the required 30 feet. The property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward 5 of Springfield Township. Again, those two applications will be heard on Monday, or excuse me, on Monday, March 28th at 7:00 PM in the Township Building here. And finally, at the February 9th meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Board authorized the Township's Lister's Office to attend the February 28th, 2022 meeting of the zoning hearing board of Springfield Township in order to defend the zoning officer's determination and to oppose two variance requests submitted by William and Kathy Murphy of 2106 Carlton Way for the construction of a new single-family dwelling in a property known as Tax Map Parcel 52-00-03025 located on Carlton Way, Flower Town. At the March 7th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Board met informally with Mr. and Mrs. Murphy and had the opportunity to learn more about the history of the lot, its unique characteristics, and the intended use and occupancy of the new dwelling. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners rescind its opposition to the zoning petition submitted by William and Kathy Murphy of 2106 Carlton Way based upon representations made by the Murphys at the March 7th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. and Mrs. Murphy must still appear before the zoning hearing board of Springfield Township to present their case. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. As the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I have no report this evening. So we will move on to Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavon.
Hi, everyone. I have two resolutions to offer to you today. First is Resolution Number 1564, DCED Local Share Grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1564, a resolution authorizing application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account Grant Program for the project known as the 1725 Walnut Avenue Park Redevelopment Project. The proposal is in the amount of $1 million and would fund the remediation and demolition of any structures located on-site as well as a portion of the earthwork, landscaping, and associated improvement costs associated with the creation of a park at the site of the former Tank Car Corporation of America at 1725 Walnut Avenue, Orleans. That is my motion.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. My mic was off for a portion of that, but I think you got the gist of it.
The second resolution I have here is Resolution Number 1565, DCNR C2P2 Program. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1565, a resolution authorizing application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the projects known as the 1725 Walnut Avenue Master Plan and Phase 2 of the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Project. The proposal is in the amount of $25,000 for the master plan and $175,000 for the trail project. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. This time, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Please, not everyone at once. Okay, no further comment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
All right, not bad.